We're going to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Simsbury Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, April 10th, 2018. Time is 7:02. If you'd all please join me and rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll move closer to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Okay, take the roll call. It's a little light today, I believe because of Simsbury. Simsbury schools were on vacation this week?
They are.
Yeah?
Yep.
Okay. So Holly Bem, she's excused, absent and excused. David Blumey.
Here.
Aaron Levitt Smith, absent and excused. Craig McCormack, absent and excused. Alan Needham.
Here.
William Rice, present. Elizabeth Burt.
Present.
Richard Cortez, absent. Gary Lungarini, absent. Okay, so in order to complete a quorum for the Planning Commission, Elizabeth, I'll ask you to assume a seat with the regular members. That brings our tally to four, which is a quorum under our bylaws. So we are free to conduct business. Okay, Mr. Secretary, could you please lead us through the minutes of meeting from our previous meeting?
Looking.
Looking. Here, you want to use this?
Thank you. I got them in my pile here somewhere. Thank you.
As you can see, I have no notes, so.
Yep. Okay, there's only two pages. Page one, any corrections to attendance or what it says? Okay, page two.
Good.
Looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the March 27, 2018 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Home favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries. Thank you, Alan. Minute for approved as submitted. Okay, on to the next item. Old business, we have no open public hearings, no open applications. Under new business, receipt of applications, I see there are none. Is that still correct? Yep. Okay. I would like to move that we add an agenda item, number two, under new business. It's a CGS 824 referral related to the fiscal year 2018-2019 Capital Improvement Plan as submitted by the, I guess it's the Board of Selectmen, Town Manager or Board of Selectmen?
Finance.
Okay, so, Mr. Rabbit.
Do you have a first?
Oh, sorry. So I make a motion that we add the agenda item?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adding the item, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to this agenda item, do you have a letter in your packet dated by 2019? Regarding Planning Commission Connecticut General Statutes 8-24 referral for the fiscal year 2018 through 2019 Capital Improvement Plan. And Sean has, in essence, a four and a half-page cover letter. On the third, second page, you'll see at the bottom, there was a, these are copies of meeting minutes from the Selectmen's meeting from March 15th, where there was a motion made by Sean Askam with a list of capital projects with the dollar amounts. But if you turn the page to page three, at the bottom, Mr. Askam made a motion to refer the following capital projects to the Planning Commission in accordance with Connecticut General Statutes 8-24. That's the clear list of the items being referred to you under 8-24. Under 8-24, your obligations are to review the capital improvement program and make a determination of whether those proposed improvements are consistent or inconsistent with the town's adopted plan of conservation and development. That motion in the March meeting of the Board of Selectmen was seconded by Mike Payne, and all members present voted in favor of that motion.
Okay, so since we received this fairly recently, can we just take a couple of minutes to look through it?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman.
So I'll ask the commissioners to review the data, and if you have any questions, you can pose them to staff.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm just for clarity, I'm just going to run through the items under 8-24 that are being referred to you. And those were greenway improvements, multi-use trail, town of Simsbury/Bloomfield, highway pavement management, sidewalk resurfacing, ashbore tree mitigation, Department of Public Works dump truck, terrafill sewer rehabilitation, primary clarifier rehabilitation, plant water system rehabilitation, 1990 jet/flush truck replacement, school facilities master plan/reconfiguration study, district network infrastructure, Henry James Middle School renovation Phase III, and boiler replacement at Latimer Lane, and school security improvements.
What does the district network infrastructure refer to?
Information technology or IT associated with the school's network infrastructure.
Dave, you have a question?
Mr. Rabbit, I know you attended the town meeting, excuse me, the Board of Finance meeting. I don't remember the date, because you and I were there, both there. Were changes made to any of this at that particular meeting?
Perhaps some of the numbers may have changed, potentially with ash. Again, I'm trying to recall from last Thursday night's meeting.
So probably all the items stayed, but some of the numbers changed.
Items, I believe, have stayed. Ashbore tree mitigation may have been slightly reduced.
There was a lot of discussion about the dump truck, if I recall.
I asked that question to Sean Kimball today, and Sean said, so the activities did not change?
Changed.
It was the numbers associated with each activity. So this list is the same list?
And we're being asked as to the, for the, that these items, not their dollar amount.
That's why I tried to make that clear.
You did, you did. That's why I'm trying to re, I'm saying back to you what I heard you say.
Yes.
That it's our responsibility to say that these items consistent with the plan of conservation and development.
Yes.
Thank you.
Again, the process will determine the financial outcome of those.
Okay.
Where are the trees that are threatened by the ashbore that we're talking about?
They are in town rights of way and also on town property.
Okay, so they're around?
Yes.
In one location?
Yes. And this is an item where they are trees that are in various stages of deterioration that is irreversible. So if, you know, from a financial standpoint, any deferred maintenance on those is, will be an outlying year. The problem is not going away. From my recollection of what Mr. Roy explained to the Board of Selectmen and at a town meeting that it is proceeding kind of in a southern to northern direction.
Mr. Rabbit, you've had more time than we have to think about each of these items. Are there any that give, that you're concerned about?
I did not see anything in the proposed list that would be potentially deemed inconsistent with the goals and objectives of the plan of conservation and development. I think, you know, the way they're tiered here is the first, we'll call it a paragraph for greenway improvements, multi-purse trail, those are also municipally associated with maintaining infrastructure, improving infrastructure within the community, and those are clear goals and objectives of the P O C D.
Right.
The second part are primarily associated with the Water Pollution Control Authority, and maintaining that infrastructure has, you know, and keeping that.
Right.
In good condition is mentioned in regards to quality of life, existing infrastructure, the ability to provide sewer and wastewater treatment, as well as provide economic development from the standpoint that you have a plant that is functioning and allows for business growth on the economic development side. The third category is on the school side, and again, those are either studies or proposes to maintain infrastructure or potentially expanded infrastructure. And there, you know, there's no mention in the P O C D not to maintain existing facilities or not to expand an existing facility, but meet the needs of the community.
Okay, so if I added, added up correctly, I think there were 15 capital improvement projects that are, that were being asked to consider. However, this, this package includes more than that, and I believe those are for projects, there's a six-year plan shown in this package. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so not every one of the...
Things described are our business.
Right.
We're looking at the ones with, that are to be, that are to be included in the FY 1920 planning year. 2018, 2019.
Right.
Fiscal year.
So the fiscal year.
So that's why, that's why there's nothing, for example, we have the description on the senior center.
It's got a list.
Piece here, but there, but there's nothing in the current fiscal year intended for that. That's...
Correct.
All right, thank you.
That's why the dollar amounts associated on page two and three are more expansive than the list at the bottom of page three that continues on page four with school security improvement.
If not, I'd like to make a motion that we return a positive referral for the following capital improvement programs for fiscal year 1819. That would be greenway improvements, multi-use trail, town of Simsbury/Bloomfield, highway pavement management, sidewalk resurfacing, ashbore tree mitigation, Department of Public Works dump truck, terrafill sewer rehabilitation, primary clarifier rehabilitation, plant water system rehabilitation, 1999 jet flusher truck replacement, school facilities master planning/reconfiguration study, district network infrastructure, Henry James Middle School renovation Phase III, boiler replacement, Latimer Lane, Latimer Lane School, I assume, and school security improvements based on the fact that they are consistent with the 2017 Town of Simsbury Plan of Conservation and Development.
Well done.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor of the positive referral, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Okay? Motion passes unanimously. Very good. Okay, now we come to general commission business, subdivision regulations. Mr. Glidden explained the situation to us at our last meeting. I believe these are statutory requirements that need to be included in the subdivision regulations. And I'd also asked the commissioners to review the subdivision regulations in the event that there were, there were regulations that we would like to perhaps revise such that we could take them up at the same time as the public hearing, hearing for the special flood hazard area revisions.
Well, it's open, we could look at any.
That was the idea. I did not make the time to review the subdivision regulations.
I had something I thought we could talk about.
Okay.
I think that we've stumbled in the past over some of the FIO requirements. Seems to me I remember that. FIO is fee in lieu of.
Oh, okay.
So if you have to, if you're in a position where you have to give some open space to the town, there is a provision where you can pay a fee, I'm making it much simpler than it is, that you can pay a fee in lieu of the open space.
Thank you.
Or you can combine the fee with lesser space.
Okay.
And I, I'll have to confess, I don't remember exactly what the issue was, but I do remember there was something, we had some discussion about a dollar amount, how it was calculated, and I thought, if everybody's okay with that, I thought we could talk about that and see if there's anything in there that's not correct, that we should look at. Wasn't there a problem with the alternate payment?
Yes, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
With regard to the fee in lieu of open space, it's authorized under state statute section 8-25, and there's a fairly robust discussion of the powers that a commission has, and in kind of two aspects. It gives a commission the ability to adopt regulations associated with the provision of open space. So you can have a dedication. A dedication can be in the form of fee simple, it can be an easement, it can be some hybrid of easement and fee simple dedication, and that is a choice bestowed on the commission if it's written into your regulations. Right now, you have a 20% provision that you can ask or require up to 20% of the land being subdivided to be dedicated to the community as open space. Could be fee simple, could be an easement, could be land given to the land trust, and that's up to 20%. And that is fairly consistent with what the state statute allows you to do. You went one step further, which I believe is supported by the, by the court system in Connecticut, where you have a proportionality test there. So if you have 100 acres, and 50% is wetlands, and 50% is good land, if you are requiring the developer to give you 20% of his 100 acres for 20 acres, that you have proportionality tests, that he, that developer potentially couldn't offer you 20 acres of wetlands, that they would have to offer you 20 acres of wetlands and 20 acres of non-wetlands. And that proportionality is, I believe, supported under the statutes.
That's in our...
And that is in your regulations today. And again, you have proposals and public benefit and value and the determination of value. What's critical is under, under value for fee in, fee in lieu of open space, which it starts out on page 33 of your subdivision regulation. You talk about value, and the value is such fee or combination of fee and the fair market value of the land transfer shall be equal to more than 10% of the fair market value of the land subdivided prior to the approval of subdivision. And that's really right out of state statute, that if you have that 100-acre parcel and you're going to subdivide it, it's not the value of the land after the subdivision, it's the value of the raw land prior to its development. And that's consistent with statute. The next section, item four, says how do you determine this value? And you're supposed to establish the fair market value using an appraisal paid for by the applicant but agreed upon by the commission in consultation and approval from the town's And I think that's a check and balance that the commission put into the regulations at some point in time.
Why are some things underlined here?
You have the...
I'm looking at this handout you gave us, right? On page 28, for example, where we're talking about this, certain things are underlined. Is that because you want us to pay attention to that, or those are changes? 27, 28, really go over what you were just talking about.
Should be.
We all have the same...
The existing regs were underlined.
Pardon?
The existing regs were underlined.
So the things that are not underlined are...
Those are just the way the existing regulations were written.
Mr. Rabbit, how much of what you just, I'm sorry, when you finish this one, Hal.
Okay.
When you finish with her response.
Yeah, let's, let's take care of that.
So that, as you go down...
Sorry, Jamie.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think that we haven't addressed Elizabeth's comment yet.
The, the underlining in the regulations has no meaning with, from my perspective, with regards to replacing or deleting. And I'll walk you through some of the items that we were concerned of, and I think, to Alan's point, have come up before.
So the things that are underlined are things that we're concerned about that have come up? I'm sorry, I just don't get the difference.
For instance, on page 28...
Let me just clarify.
Yeah, so if we have 28, you see this is underlined, this is underlined, this is not, this is, this is not.
Could this have been a working copy back in 2012?
No, no, this is not.
Because that's right off the...
That's the way it exists.
Yeah, that's the way it exists in the regulations. There's no correlation between the underlining and the entire document you have.
Okay, so we should just ignore it?
Ignore it for discussion purposes, Elizabeth.
Thanks.
I don't think we underlined our edits in 2012.
I don't know what that was, but I have it outlined in yellow also. Okay, so there was something about that.
Is it there too?
Yeah, true.
All right, so...
So as we're working through the regular, and on page 27, again, I said 33 in my markup, but on page 27, section 15 is the open space dedication and criteria. And again, you have that criteria for open space in A, you have the open space requirements in B, which goes to the 20%. You have, it's section, section three is the applicant with the approval of the commission may pay a fee to the municipality and/or a fee to the municipality and transfer land to the municipality in lieu of any requirement to provide open spaces. So to Alan's point, this is your fee in lieu of a dedication or an easement. And under item number four, that 10% of the fair market value, that is consistent with state statute. You do the fair market appraisal. If, if that 100 acres is appraised at $1 million, the maximum the commission can ask the developer to pay is $100,000. If you had a, you know, 10 lot subdivision on that 100 acres, you would divide the $100,000 by 10, the maximum you could apply is $10,000 per lot. That fee is due and payable upon transfer of title of the land. It's not due and payable when the subdivision's approved as title transfers typically, and there's a $10,000 escrow at the closing that goes to the town. The issue potentially where you have something different than state statute is item number five, which is an alternative payment and process. I'm not aware of any correlation between this regulation and state statute that potentially draws consistency between this reg and what's allowed under state statute.
So you're saying it's not from state statute, it's of our own creation?
It's not referenced in the state statute. The state statute clearly references the fair market value, the appraisal, and up to 10% of the fair market value. It does not, I'm not aware of any reference to an alternative payment process.
So if someone were to ask, is it consistent with the statute? How do you answer that if there's no reference to it?
Carefully.
Carefully. Wait a minute, Al, so are we in a place where we need to look at this because it's not from the statute? Is something we should change?
I, I think what you've experienced over time is if you do the fair market appraisal and you determine a value, in some instances, that value is higher than the alternative payment. And how do you then tell an applicant, we want the higher number, not the alternative? When the alternative's in the regs?
What would be the alternative payment?
The alternative is you pay $2,500 per subdivision lot.
Sure.
No appraisal, no fair market value, no determination of 10%.
It was put in, it was put in for expediency, to avoid arguing over who the appraiser is and then...
Now I remember that discussion.
Yeah, yeah, and then maybe the value was not arbitrary.
We did discuss what number should it be.
We sure did.
Yeah.
Right. So it's just something...
I think what Jamie's trying to, you know, highlight is the fact that maybe we could insist on a higher number, or, I don't know what you're recommending, Jamie, maybe nothing at all.
Can I just back up? Are we in any jeopardy by having any number at all if it's not from the statute?
I think if, if, if you're concerned about maintaining an alternative number, I would really seek legal counsel's guidance on that, and maybe we need to change the wording to get it more consistent or closer to what state statute is asking you to do. I have had some experience in communities where they haven't gone the appraisal route with a formal appraisal, that the developer has put their best faith effort forward. You know, most people have a good grasp of what the values are in a community, and if a developer came in and said, that land is worth $1 million, and everybody at the commission says, yeah, maybe it's worth nine, 950, or someone says, maybe it's worth 1.2, but a million is fairly consistent with a fair market value. And if the developer is proposing that, commissions have accepted it and then taken the 10% value from that. But it's the formation of a value, not just the formation of a number. And again, this has come up with counsel in a few discussions.
We did.
The, you know, the...
You're right, we talked about this.
Yeah, and we talked about, you know, the wording under item three value, where it said the, the combination of the fee and the fair market value of the land transferred shall be equal to not more than 10%. Now, Jamie, your example was, we would insist on 10%, okay? We could do that, we could do 2%.
What I'm saying is you can go up to 10%.
Right.
You know, that is a commission decision. Under statutes, you can go up to that $100,000. A lot of commissions historically have said, if it's a vacant piece of land, we'll divide it by 10. If it's a vacant piece of land that has a house on it already, that house is already potentially utilizing existing infrastructure, open space in the community, so we're not gonna, we're gonna divide it by 10 and give you a credit for the existing house. So in my example, the $100,000, you would get a $10,000 credit. You're not gonna charge someone an open space fee for a lot that already exists. So they back out one lot.
But those things you just mentioned, they're not mentioned in statute either.
Statute says you can establish the fair... Statute says you can establish the fair market value, and I think there's some credibility...
The process, there's some room.
There's a little bit of room in the process.
So this is kind of our process? The 25... I don't care about the dollar number at this point, but just having a dollar number is not something we have to be concerned about.
Right. Again, one of the things you can't do in Connecticut is require what's called an exaction, which is require a payment for someone to develop the land. In other communities, other New England states, for every lot that's created, they have to pay, you know, $9,332 for every new lot that's created, and that is calculated as part of the infrastructure for library expansion, parks and culture, roads, and sewer. And all of that is calculated at a percentage rate to come up with a number. In Connecticut, you have certain things given to you under state statute that you can do and other things you can't. I think in some of our past discussions is, is number six in that alternative payment one of those gray areas? So as we're going through the regs, I think, you know, if it's something you want to keep or modify the language to have it as an option, I would just run that lang... Recommend we run that language by town council.
I don't know why we need to do that. We did it before.
We just did it, yeah.
In 2012.
I'd forgotten how long the discussion went, that's right.
So we have this alternative payment of 2,500 per lot regardless of how large the lot is? So if the lot is a small quarter or eighth of an acre lot versus a 10-acre lot, we would still charge 2,500?
Potentially. There's other ways that we could... They could decide, or we could decide to ask for open space if it's a real big subdivision.
That's an alternate.
Yeah, no, I see that. But I see that as creating difficulty, that as well as up to 10% of the fair market value. So if you give one person 2% and another 10%, why? What makes you make that decision? And people can say, well, that's not fair. Why should I have to pay 10% of my lot when this other person only did 2%?
Oh, it's not fair, if you want to use that argument. We have the ability to assess anywhere from 0 to 20% open space. You know, why 10% here and 20% there?
Wouldn't we want more of a standard that is applicable in every case?
I think that would be a noble, noble desire.
And again, I'm not a proponent of any position with regards to open space, fee in lieu of open space, a combination of it, that's your decision, your authority as a commission. But I think every time you apply open space, you have to look at the merits of the application. And the example of a 100-acre farm. If someone was dividing it in two, and it was, you know, it was an actual subdivision, you're probably not going to require that person who's subdividing 100 acres into a 50-acre lot, and a 50-acre lot, or 20 and 80, to dedicate 20% of that acreage to open space for a two-lot subdivision. Conversely, if you did a fee in lieu of, and the value of the land was $1 million, and they were doing a two-lot subdivision, you're probably not going to take $100,000 and divide it by two and require that applicant who's doing a two-lot subdivision upon transfer of title of the land to pay a fee in lieu of open space of $50,000. And that's why the statute is worded "up to." And again, that's where some of the discretion is, and perhaps, Bill, that's where the fee may have come in to say, okay, in that scenario...
The fee clearly was brought onto the table with...
To expedite?
Nope, nope, not... The fee in lieu of idea itself was that... It was at a time when we felt that many previous subdivisions that had dedicated 20% of the parcel or the subdivision to open space resulted in a fragmented collection of properties.
Landlocked, all kinds of problems.
Right. It's consistent with other communities, and that's why the legislator added fee in lieu of open space, where some municipalities feel it doesn't make sense to continue to take two acres here and an acre there, and five acres there and 10 acres there. Then you have all these little municipal holdings that don't add up to much.
Maybe unfair question, but I'm new at this. How do we compare to our neighbors? This kind of requirements?
Most communities in Connecticut have between 10 and 20% dedication, and most communities follow the 10% rule on fee in lieu of. There may only be a handful.
So we're...
Have an alternative.
So without naming any other community, we are sort of consistent with what you're aware of in terms of Connecticut?
You're consistent with Connecticut and consistent with what the law allows you to do.
Okay. Thank you.
We did hash this out. I'd forgotten all the details, but we hashed this out for a long time.
Well, you know, maybe we look at it this way. I remember the discussion clearly, that we wanted to stop the fragmentation of the open space. We wanted to put the town in a position to be able to acquire parcels of land that would augment already existing open spaces. Okay? Now, I understand that, you know, Jamie, you've given us a couple scenarios that probably would not have netted the town as much money as this alternative payment. I don't remember how we got to the 25, to be honest with you.
I think we compromised.
Oh, I think it was in reference to a specific plan. Wasn't it that plan over on the west side of town where it was an old house with property around it that was... And the woman living in it was going to...
Well, I think that was an application in the supply...
It was an application, and we started discussing the need for how open space would be appropriate or not appropriate.
This was done six years ago. This was written.
Yeah, and we, I think, we employed this, right? And the town has... None of those lots have been sold. So we haven't received any of the payments. We haven't received any fee in lieu of open space payments.
So... Ever?
Ever. It's only been six years.
Okay.
So basically, there's... What I see is there's no need...
Sorry.
...to change this because we're not in violation of anything, it's just the way we do it. Warts and all.
What prompts you to bring this up at this point?
Because when I went through this quickly today, there was something about filings that rang in my mind, okay? And I just couldn't remember quite what it was. And when I hear Bill explain it now, I remember. We had quite a discussion on this, and this is what we ended up with, when we revised the regulations six years...
So there's been no application that has tested or stretched...
One came up, but never one anymore.
But that was on Holcomb, right?
Yes, you approved two with fee in lieu of open space in the past two years. One on Holcomb, one on Old Farms. 224 Yakobonis on Old Farms was a two-lot re-subdivision. And Holcomb was a three-lot re-sub.
A button, great bonds, they...
Where you did tread it for the farmhouse and then applied the fee in lieu of open space for the two newly created lots.
Right.
But they've not been sold, so we haven't collected the cash.
Well, we don't have a bank account that can take it.
So do we need to create a bank account that can take it?
That would be finance departments.
So again, you know, as we look through it, and Alan's question is, you know, it's been six years, there's additional rulings that have come out, and it... All regulations are valid until someone challenges them. It's just one of those things that if it's a gray area and you want to move forward with it, it may be viable to just, you know, pass the litmus test again and make sure it still is valid as it was valid in 2012. To Bill's point, you know, six years for land use law isn't necessarily a long time, but there's a lot of cases that go through every... It's gonna be the contentious one where you potentially want... You know, sometimes people appeal approvals.
With conditions.
Right, that you applied the fee in lieu of open space at 10%, and you thought you were doing the right thing, and someone appeals that decision because they wanted to pay the alternative. Kind of from my standpoint is, is does it hurt to look and make sure that's still valid? In essence, you have three choices in your regulations. Four, really. Dedication, 10%, fair market value, alternative, and you always have the... You don't apply any of those three.
Right.
Or you could even say a fifth, and you apply a combination of those. Just make sure you're on solid ground as we move through the process at some point in time.
In your conversations with developers, is this a hurdle or a hindrance in people, in developers wanting to do developments within Simsbury?
I don't know if the term hindrance... Anything that adds cost potentially to development.
Is a hurdle for them, yes.
It's twofold with regards to the ramifications. It either affects the sales value, because the sales value potentially has to be lower if all these fees have to be paid for, or it affects the profit margin of the developer who has to do, want to absorb it or raise the prices of land. So in some instances, it could be viewed as another tax. In some instances, it could be viewed as a tax placed upon the developer and not shared by the people not developing in town. So there are multiple perspectives to look at it from. You know, if you're wearing a developer hat, it's a tax. If you're someone who already lives in the community, you may welcome the fact they're paying a fee in lieu of infrastructure, you know, a fee in lieu of open space to help the park system and help the acquisition of land, to Bill's point where maybe it makes more sense than little pods around town.
Right.
So I think you can discuss that in two ways, Dave. I don't know if there's a correct answer, other than it is typically viewed as another cost to doing business in a community.
I'm just trying to understand, you know, the myth is that, that I've heard from people, is that Simsbury's difficult and expensive to do business in. And I'm trying to understand where that... When that takes place, you know, is this one of those things?
A lot of those complaints go back 30 years.
And I said, I said myth. I don't know enough to know that that's a fact, so I said a myth. But I think that is a existing myth, however old it is.
What few people I've talked to that do business in different towns say they're all a pain in the neck.
Well, I'm sure, just as you said, to every... To any developer, it's an additional cost, so therefore it's a hurdle. But I'm trying to understand, you know, are we significantly different than Avon and Granby and...
Well, no, because we're using the state statute, so...
Well, we're using the basic state statute, but then we put our own little twist on it.
Well, but that would be the lowest-cost solution.
Yeah, okay. I'm not fighting that, I'm just trying to understand it.
Exactly what you're talking about, you know.
And trying to understand where, from different points of view.
There was another community in Connecticut for a while who had just a simple fee in lieu of open space, $500 per lot. The developers didn't challenge that. Because it was $500 a lot, not 10% of the fair market value of the land they're developing. So in that instance, they came, and if it was a 10-lot subdivision, they paid a $5,000 fee in lieu of open space. They didn't give up their 10% of their acreage, they didn't... They paid the $500 per lot. That was a policy. Some of these are policy decisions. They're not Mike Glenn decisions, they're not Jamie Rabbit decisions. They are at the level...
And the policy in our town, whether it's written or not, is that people want to maintain the character of the town, and part of that is the availability of open space. So one way for us to preserve that, it's in the POCD, through this regulation, is to have options to achieve that goal. Now, Jamie, if you really think that there's any legal, you know, bad foundation for this, okay, we can ask Bob to look at it, but...
Again, if it's something you're very comfortable keeping in the regulations, let's make sure there's no exposure.
Having...
Because if you apply...
Bill will review it.
If you apply that, let's eliminate any inkling of exposure.
Why are you suggesting that? Has something happened over the years?
It's just, it's...
It's untested?
We used it.
So, well, nobody challenged it.
The regulation was reviewed by council at the time of the revision.
Yeah, you're asking the obvious, is it necessary to mess with this?
Again, it's your policy, your discretion.
Well, barring any legal jeopardy, I would say no. It's not necessary.
Yeah, the only thing I could say is that it could be considered arbitrary, and that at some point, somebody who's not happy would challenge.
Yeah, but you have all those other choices, you know?
Right.
And every situation is so different.
Will be up to 10%.
Yeah, I'm with... I know what you're saying, Elizabeth. I'd love it to be black and white, bulletproof, but that's probably not gonna happen.
And not everything to Mr. Blum's question is, you know, a lot of times, what do the developers want? They want consistency. So if staff understands what the policy of the commission is, we can deliver that consistency to the developer from day one.
I don't set the policy for the town, but I know that when we were discussing this, I made it very clear that I think we have enough open space in this town, and we don't need to make it difficult for applicants to be able to subdivide in an effort to increase the open space of Simsbury.
Especially as some of it wouldn't be usable anyway.
Right.
One reason to do that, however, I agree with they have large parcels of open space rather than little pockets here and there. But on the other hand, when you start getting intensive developments, like some of the projects that have been coming up, you're making housing a lot more dense in Simsbury, and you're losing the space between houses, the space between developments, the space between homes and businesses. And the open space requirement, if applied in those cases, would provide some buffer zones.
But for those, remember, Elizabeth, we didn't lose any open space with those.
Right.
Okay, we didn't necessarily add a lot, okay?
No, but I'm saying, in future cases, you might want to buffer around a development so that it's not elbow-to-elbow with the next development over.
Now, that's not the intent of this, you know, portion of the regulation. So I'm comfortable with it, Jamie.
And again, from staff's perspective, we're not...
Thanks for bringing it up, Alan.
Yeah.
We're not recommending you...
I don't know.
Bill, we're not recommending you change a thing.
Understood. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, there wasn't recent litigation that exposes us to something.
I guess that's what I was getting at, too. I just wanted to make sure we're still okay.
One of the things that I wanted to actually talk about, the technical requirements of the submittals. Now, you guys would be a lot closer to it than me. You know, we talk about the size of the Mylars and numbers of copies, and you guys, is it still relevant with all those types of requirements? Are any of them archaic?
Yeah, Mr. Jim, with regards to some of the technical submissions, Mike and I have talked about it over the last two-plus years, is in some aspects, it's clarity of those technical aspects, that when a survey comes in for a subdivision, that the boundary is certified A2 survey under the Consumer Protection Code, that covers surveyors. There is discussion for your site plan and site plan analysis, that the applicant shall provide topography based on what's called NAVI 1983, which is basically a compass heading. It's a north, but it doesn't talk about the accuracy of the topo. So can I use USGS extrapolated? Can I use photogrammetry that's not necessarily tied to the ground? Or should you require what's called T2 survey data or survey... Or should you require what's called T2 survey data or survey, topographic survey data to a T2 standard, which is for a two-foot contour, it's half of a contour interval, so it's no more than a foot off. If you're doing one-foot topo, it's no more than six inches off.
Mm-hmm.
I think, Mike, the town has had some experiences where the grades on some of the photogrammetry or USGS have created problems in the field.
Powder Forest Homes was an example where they use topo based on geographic information system. When they went to construction, as they were developing their actual plans for each individual houses, the topo on the site versus what was shown on our geographic information system was off upwards of five to eight feet. So they had to do a lot of resur surveying of those homes. I mean, nothing's wrong now that everything was built and there was no issues, but allowing for alternative sources of data, sometimes it seems that it enables an applicant to come in spending less money upfront, but could be very, very costly in the end if there's, the data's bad.
And I've had some instances where communities that have allowed photogrammetry but weren't clear in their regulations that the photogrammetry was tied to the ground. So in some communities where you have a lot of ground cover or heavy evergreen, in one aspect, there was an old tree farm, so you had a lot of evergreens at six to 12 feet. So the contour elevations were off by four to eight feet in that scenario. And when the contractor went to build the road and ended up in litigation between the contractor and the survey firm, because the cuts and fills weren't real. So where he estimated the cost of construction. So again, it's just, there are standard things that the development community would understand, A2, T2, it's generally required in surrounding communities, and it's gonna, just tightening up a few of those things within the regulations.
So do you have suggestions for that?
We can come up with a list for you of suggested, recommended, we'll take what you have and we'll insert, I started on that list.
And would those things be specified here in the subdivision regulations?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. And what you can do, too, is typically, you have, in subdivision regulations, the statute allows you to do waivers. There's case law out there that says you can't do a waiver of a standard. So if it, you know, required you to do a certain landscape buffer, that it's very difficult to have an alternative to that buffer and waive a standard. But in the subdivision regulations, in talking with legal counsel a number of times, there's still some understanding that you could waive the submission of information. For instance, we'll go back to the 100-acre farm. You have a 100-acre farm and your regulations require A2, T2. So that would require you to do topography on the entire 100 acres. Suppose someone on that subdivision, there was an existing farmhouse on the 100 acres and they were proposing to take two lots off of it, excuse me, a two-acre lot off of it. Do you need topography on the other 98 acres if there's an existing farmhouse there? And do you need an A2 survey for the other 98 acres? Or do you need accurate survey data for the two-acre lot being created? And in some of the rural communities I've worked at, that's a discussion all the time because it could be $20,000 to $25,000 to do the A2, T2 for the 100 acres and it's $8,000 to $10,000 to do it for the two acres. And really, to make a decision, you need accurate data on the new lot being created, not the other 98 acres that the farmhouse sits in the middle of. That all the existing infrastructure is already there, sewer, water, driveway, house, utilities are there. In some communities, they allow that waiver provision. It's not, you're not reducing a standard, you're reducing the submission of information to still require the standard, but only on a portion of the entire application.
Thinking back for the last couple of years with applications that have been submitted, were they more or less compliant with the submittal requirements? Or did you have to ask them to, hey, I need you to do this, you need to do this before you can submit it?
There were some questions when grading occurs on property, that a landscape, excuse me, a licensed surveyor is grading the property, where some would say under the Consumer Protection Code that if there's grading occurring on the property, you need an engineer to do that. So we've had some of those discussions. How far a landscape architect can go with grading and design versus an engineer. So again, potentially clarifying those roles so that, you know, back to the, certainty of the rules allows them to navigate through the process. So if there's gray areas in the regulation, they find out midway through that I have to hire an engineer, that potentially causes delay and there's a cost factor for that.
Yeah.
Versus it's clear in the regulations that if I'm proposing any grading on the property, you need to either have a professional engineer preparing that, or in some instances, a registered landscape architect can do grading. If there's storm drainage, the landscape architect, I think under my understanding, can't do the storm drainage and it does require a PE. But again, it's trying to clarify some of those roles, Bill?
Mm-hmm.
To, again, to grant certainty.
Yeah.
And also to clarify expectations of the commission.
Mm-hmm. Okay, that's one thing I'd ask you guys to look at. And any overly onerous submittal requirements, just, you know, take a look and, you know, I read, I write specifications at work and we ask for stuff because it's in the template and we never use it.
Right.
So there's no, no need to continue to ask for things that are superfluous. Okay, so I think we should probably table this again, okay, for a couple of reasons. We already, we already made our referral for the zoning commission with Mike's flood, flood stuff, okay? So we're not under a timeline there. There's no timeline for us to revise ours, if I remember correctly. No, immediate.
Immediate. We have to do it for participation in FIP, National Flood Insurance Program. However, right now, the primary focus is having the zoning regulations brought up to speed and current. So the subdivision regulations will need to be updated.
Yeah.
However, zoning's first.
By when?
I'm talking with Diane, she'll work with us. She'll give us a couple months at least. So if you were to, let's say you were to workshop this still and, or talk about amongst yourself and you didn't want to, you wanted to wait till June, she would work with us on June. She wouldn't work with us if we said, how about next June?
Yeah. No, I think, sorry, Alan, let me just finish my thought. We have a number of commissioners who aren't here tonight. I'd like to give them...
And you want to see what Jamie and...
Right. And so for the next meeting, if you guys could come up with recommendations on the submittal requirements, and let's put this agenda item on the agenda again for our next meeting. And then I, I'm pretty confident we'll be able to have a good idea of what we want to take to the public hearing. Okay, and then we can schedule that.
Okay.
Great. Everybody in agreement with that? It's not a motion? I just been looking for a concurrence?
Sounds like agreed land.
Yeah.
Agreed, we have time.
All right, Mike, so we didn't forget, you know, your draft revisions, but, you know, I don't see any reason why we would want to revise those. So I'm gonna take them as written. So they'll definitely be put to the public hearing. In addition, maybe there's a couple other things that we'll want to do as well.
Yeah, and I do have one, just a simple reference on page 23.
Yeah.
Timeframes for approval or disapproval, the commission shall approve, approve with modified, disapprove as prescribed in General Statutes 8-26.
Yeah.
A few of those references have changed.
Oh, good.
Actually, the timeframes are contained in Chapter 124, Section 8-7D. So we'll look for a few of those.
Okay.
As, again, Chairman, I think in the discussion tonight, we're looking for, we'll call it low-hanging fruit, where there are certain issues that have come up in the last two years to try and identify clarity. So you're getting the appropriate information as you review these applications. We're eliminating some areas of gray and we're clarifying any inappropriate references to older sections of the statutes.
Okay.
And regardless of the reference to timeframes in the statute, we know what they are and you have been following them.
Okay, great.
Do we need to say something more specific about during public hearings? And we've had this in the last year where we required new material to be submitted and it was submitted the day that we were meeting. And at least in one case, we had to make a decision, didn't we? Do you folks recall that?
I remember, right. You can't do anything about that, that they have a right to submit it right up till the meeting. And that's the law. That's the way it is.
And we can't say that we recommend they do in advance?
You can make a recommendation, I think, that you would...
In writing, do we want to do that?
Appreciate submissions seven days before the hearing, but I'm not aware of anything where you could make a decision that potentially denies an application because they submitted it at the public hearing and your regs say it should have been in seven days before. The purpose of the public hearing is to receive written and verbal testimony from the general public, which includes the applicant. One of the things we're constantly told is, at a public hearing, do not tell someone they cannot speak. They cannot submit that piece of paper. Let them submit the piece of paper, let them speak and seek guidance after the hearing closes.
Okay, I will recommend that we remove the underlining from those paragraphs.
Again, we'll look for consistency for font size, bold versus non-bold, underline versus underlined.
Yeah.
Sorry, another one.
What are we gonna use as a standard, Elizabeth?
Pardon?
What are we gonna use as the standard for grammar and punctuation?
I don't know, but I see...
Drunken White or the APA manual? Chicago Elements of Style?
AP, AP manual is great. But this one here, we've got underlined and italicized, which makes me go, why is that so important?
Okay. Guys, please take a look at that, too. Any correspondence?
None that I'm aware of, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, any comments, questions? No. Okay, this is the point where I would seek a motion.
For adjournment?
For adjournment.
So moved.
Mr. Blumey made the motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Alan Needham seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The meeting is adjourned at 8:05.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. No, I love that subject.
Jamie, were you at the...
I love...